Excellent, I will call the order of the February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, Bethel Planning Zone Commission, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, just a reminder, any commission members who are using non-electronic devices, preusing or reviewing the Google Drive, and not for texting one another. Um, we'll start with, as he was making motion, to add to the agenda, under new business, um, Ladania State Cyber, for a youth volleyball tournament at one. Ball favorite. Any close, the extensions? Perfect, that'll be on the new business. Uh, we have two public hearings tonight that are continued. Both, um, Kevin Cleary, one oh five Milwaukee Avenue, uh, eight thirty G for twelve units. Uh, and T D and Sons for fifty-three Taylor Avenue, eight thirty G for twenty-six units. Both these hearings will be continued until March eleventh. Uh, no testimony will be taken tonight. Uh, we'll move into new business. Oh, thank you. I forgot to do introductions. So, real quick, uh, we'll start at the table, do introductions.
Kenny Parsons.
Diane Ryan, Commissioner.
Mike Kazashti, Commissioner.
Paul Sheehan, the Chairman.
Kitty Grant, Secretary.
Doug Kenny, alternate.
Earl Brayden, Commissioner.
Uh, Leggins, Commissioner.
And staff joining us tonight.
Can you be at seven?
Yeah, okay.
That's correct, no, uh, planning director.
Uh, Amanda Martinez, Reporting Secretary.
David McCollum, Land use coordinator.
Captain Anderson, Attorney for the Commission.
Excellent, thanks. Sorry about that, everyone. I was going through my thing here and kept going. Alright, right into the new business, uh, Tim Draper, forty-two Nashville Road, amended site plan.
Yes, if I can, it's Neil Marcus, Conoleth, P C, one fifty-eight Deer Hill Avenue, on behalf of Tim Draper, seated to my left. We had a, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, no, no, record, there's some recusals that are gonna be happening.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be refused.
I'll be refused.
And Beth, or Beth, you're refused?
Yeah.
The, uh, there was a discussion of this matter at your last meeting. During construction, it was determined that a, the best treatment for the driveway apron involved the construction of a boundary line, stone wall, which is approximately the height that's shown on the proposed, on the ASBIL that is the proposed modification. And that crosses onto a small piece of the neighbor's property, uh, that's Mr. Sutton. In addition, a chain link fence was always planned along the property line between Draper and Sutton. And basically, that was a safety fence, so that when they did the cut for construction, um, somebody on the Sutton property wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't fall off the, uh, the cliff, actually, uh, fall off the ledge. So, we agreed to a fence as a condition of approval. When it came to installing the fence, I think it was probably the fence company who came up with the idea that it shouldn't go on the property line, it should go on the top of the slope, which is a couple of feet onto the Sutton property line. This was discussed with Mr. Sutton and, uh, and everybody agreed that the better place for the fence was essentially at the top of the slope. Mr. Sutton asked that certain landscaping be done in connection with the installation of the fence, and that has been agreed to. And at that point, a negotiation took place, which resulted in a drafting of an agreement, which would hold Mr. Sutton harmless from any claims arising out of installations of either the fence or both the fence and the small section of wall. And basically, he granted us a license to do that. To say that if he changes his mind someday in the future, he can tell Tim Draper to move the fence back down onto his property and to cut off the piece of the wall that is on his property. So he has the option of doing that, he's not obligated in perpetuity, but for the moment, he is perfectly satisfied as long as there's an indemnification, which was to be submitted to the town attorney, to the commission, uh, and signed, uh, by both parties, by Mr. Sutton, by Drapers, and, uh, and actually I had to sign off on it as well, as the author. And that's what we've submitted. And the request of the, of the commission, the request that's on the table this evening, is this minor modification of the site plan to allow the fence to continue to exist where it was installed, in the, in the stone wall, to exist where it was built. And at the last meeting, there's some suggestion by, uh, by David that maybe the building department want to take a look at it. I thought I might have said that I don't think the building department has much interest in this because it doesn't require a building permit, but you do now have a letter from, um, Chris Baldwin indicating that he did take a look at it, and essentially, uh, he didn't have any real issues, and it did not require a building permit, which is why he was unfamiliar with it at the, at the beginning. So, at this point, uh, and then, of course, Chuck, who's on the, Chuck Andrews, who's on the screen, was not available at the last meeting. He was traveling, and I had had a conversation with him before the meeting, saying that if it was gonna be discussed, I'd discuss it, but I certainly wouldn't object to deferring the decision for his, uh, opportunity to talk to you, to participate, whatever you want, want from him. So he's here tonight, too. Um, and on the screen also tonight are the Suttons, Rick Sutton, yeah, it was, yeah, I see him up there in the corner. Uh, Rick Sutton's here listening, and I hope that if you have any questions, or if he has anything to add to this, he'll add it, but if you have any questions of him or his brother, uh, that he speaks on behalf of, you'll do that as well. But from our perspective, as the applicant, this is a fairly minor adjustment to the site plan that just reflects the better way to complete the project based upon construction in the field. And that happens from time to time, it's not unusual. So that's what we're asking for.
Yep, thank you. Um, before I go, Attorney Andrews, do you wanna, uh, I know you've had back and forth with Attorney Marcus here, and you were not here at the last meetings, do you have anything you want to add for us as the board?
Certainly, uh, Chuck Andrews, Attorney for the Commission, I apologize, my, I lost my internet, so now I, I snuck back on, I'm on my phone. Um, the, I, I don't disagree with, with, uh, what, what Mr. Marcus said, this appears to have been a, obviously, you approved the site plan. The site plan was built out, there were some departures from the site plan. Um, um, there is a question as to whether there is a safety of the wall, you had the building inspector look at that, apparently that's not an issue. And so there were two, two modifications. One is the, uh, that the location of the, of the fencing, of the wire fence is on the neighbor's property and then the retaining wall. The, the, the main issue, the reason why this is a little more, this is more complicated, i- is that it's, it's, it's on a, it's on another site that the, the improvements are on site that were not part of the application. Typically, what happens is, uh, you know, you file an application, you get the owner's consent, and, and you build on your property. And if you want to build on someone else's property, you have to get their consent. Uh, and, and, and that's what's sort of complicating here, because you can't just do it, you need to get their consent. So, a- and I understand when I, when, um, Mr. Marcus provided the whole harmless agreement, that's great, but frankly, from the commission's point of view, that's real, a lot of stuff in there is really just between the property owners. What, what you need, I think, the commission needs, is just to ensure that the, uh, the adjacent property owner, who wasn't an applicant, consents to this. So, um, that, that's what I, when I spoke most recently to Mr. Marcus, I said, just, hey, just have a Mr. Sutton, you know, so I, I consent to the improvements shown on the ASBIL that are located on my property, and then if that's, and, and then we're good, I think. So, so what, what I did is, I, and, and I understand this is also an eight thirty G application, which means if you can address it by conditions of approval, you should do that. So I, I did draft something, a proposed motion to approve the modifications for the site plan with two conditions. One, that the applicant obtained the written consent of the owner of the property located at four, forty-six Nashville Road to the improvements located on forty-six Nashville Road, as shown on the ASBIL survey. And again, indicating that those improvements consisted of a chain link fence and portions of the retaining wall. And the second condition would be that in the event that the owner of forty-six Nashville Road withdraws his or her consent to the improvements shown on the ASBIL that are located on that property of forty-six Nashville Road, the applicant shall seek a modification from the commission of the site plan, showing that the improvements to be located entirely on the applicant's property, forty-two Nashville Road. So I drafted that because I, I was just looking at this whole harmless, I just wasn't clear that it, it included the, that the applicant consented to that. Uh, the, it was consenting to the improvement shown on the site plan. I, I mean, there are, there are occasional references to of the wall and, and to the fence, but it says to be built, so I just didn't know if, if the applicant actually, the cleaner thing would be just the applicant saying, I've seen this, the ASBIL, and I'm good, I, I consent to that, and then you have the consent, and that's it. So I mean, that, that's, th- those were my suggestions. Uh, I also said that if, if you interpreted this whole harmless to be consent, or perhaps, uh, the, you know, Mr. Sutton's here, he can, he can address it orally, and it would be great to have written consent, then, um, then, then maybe you don't need the first condition. So, that, those were my suggestions.
The copy that we've submitted, signed by Robert Sutton, actually, is interesting, the side that he actually makes a biblical reference here, the Proverbs, chapter twenty-six, verse twenty-seven. And I should have actually gone and read that, because I, because I'm sure it has some meaning as to his consent. But, uh, is that, you know, word that asking to accept is written signature to it, an agreement that says, this agreement will be binding upon the parties, their heirs, successors, and the sides, and future property owners of forty-six Nashville Road.
Tim Draper, forty-eight Empire Highway West. Okay, this is going on way too far. This is the sec- sixth draft that Mr. Sutton asked us to do. Six. Everything that he wanted is, is in here. This is exactly the wordage that he wanted. The verbiage, wordage, whatever you want to use, okay? Everything from Robert Sutton, it's in this paper, signed, everything that he asked for, six times. His brother Rick Sutton was the go-between, because Robert Sutton's a little bit difficult. So, everything went through his brother Rick, who's been more than gracious, him and his wife, to do this. Okay? Second thing, and everything on his, from the property line on forty-six, which is his property, is his. It's his. The stone wall is his. Okay, it's not mine anymore, it's his. Whether it's a stone wall, or if you look at the original site plan, it was a modified rip rap grading or something to that nature, this works better. That's why it was done. Okay? The fence is at the, the top of the hill, right at the pinnacle. We could have put it down three or four feet down, and then somebody could roll into the fence. He wants a bunch of ripursitia there. The fence is gonna be hidden, you won't even see the fence. We agree, Mr. Sutton and me, in the field, this is the best place for it to go. What he told Mr. McCollum over here, I have no idea, because he went and talked to him. Okay? I know what I said, and I know the conversation I had in the field with the homeowner. Okay? So again, everything he wanted is right here, signed by all parties. Okay? Everything's safe. You have this. The thing is, it's an eight dash thirty G, what can it be, what can eight dash thirty-three J be denied on? Safety. Why would you not want this fence in the most safest place possible? I, I agree. So it's, it's the safest place. I'm sorry, this has been going on way too long, it's been going on since November twelfth. That's when I got an email from Mr. McCollum that stated. Show you exactly what it says.
Yes, or anybody else that buys that house.
If Tim wants to keep the fence on forty-six Nashville Road, he must submit a written agreement that is signed by both parties. That's what I just showed you. Six straps. Done. Okay. I don't know why this, this is still going on. I, I really don't.
It's a shortage of the time.
I know. Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, I'm sorry, but I had to listen to, to, to all of this. So unfortunately, you're gonna listen to me a little bit, you know? Anything else, Mr. Draper? I think that's it. Okay, David, comments from this? It, it should be noted. I, is, if Mr. Sutton, are you trying to offer a comment?
Yeah, I, I am. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I mean, I've been dealing with Tim for, I don't know, close to three months now. I, I, I don't know, I, I know I'm going in between my brother and, and Tim. I know that neither one likes each other, and, I mean, they can say that both of them are very big stubborn, I mean, so am I. I, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I thought we had something worked out. I, I mean, I, I do know that my brother's looking to say that, is he liable for anything that could happen on the fence or the stone wall? I, I believe that's his big thing. You know, I mean, and, or if he sells the property, is anybody liable? I mean, I mean, your attorney, Mark, has brought up that this could be changed at some time. I mean, I, I think, talking to my brother today, he was under the impression it could never be changed. I mean, I, I mean, we, we have been, and, and I've got along very good with Tim, so, you know, I, I don't want to say that I've got a problem with Tim, because I, I, I don't, or with my brother. I mean, I deal with many contracts with, at my job, and I'm not a federal mediator, but this has been very difficult. So.
Thank you.
My, my question is, like, wh- what are we doing? I don't, I don't really, I, I don't know what, I don't know what my brother and Mr. McCollum or anybody else has dealt with, so I, I can't deal with that, you know? I can only deal with what my brother and, and Tim have been going on and, and with these, all these letters, but, you know, I, I can't say what, you know, I'm, I'm looking at both sides, and it's been very difficult. But, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Could, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I am, uh, Rick Sutton. At the present time, I am at seventy Wolf Pitts Road. Bethel, I've always lived on Nashville Road myself, before we bought the house on Wolf Pitts Road.
Thank you. David?
I only have two comments to offer, because I don't want to belabor them. The placement of the fence, okay? It should be noted that that may have been prompted. The, the ledge that was exposed, if, if you can all recall the photograph that I shared with the commission, when last we discussed this at our last meeting, the fence, or the, the ledge to the, uh, left of the fence, uh, that is on Mr. Draper's property, that was exposed before Mr. Draper acquired a permit to commence construction. If, if this commission recalls, um, there was an enforcement action that, um, that the Land use Department issued against Mr. Draper for him commencing the site work before he, um, before he got approvals to construct the new structure that he has since placed on that property. So, I, I don't know if, if that may have, um, um, if that variable may be in play for why the fence was placed where it was on the site plans. The fence is shown to be entirely within Mr. Draper's property. So, a- and, and yes, the, the fence was a requirement that you guys had asked for in the interest of safety. No, no one is arguing the safety element of it. Okay? It, it's, it's the prompts for why it was being placed on that, that's one thing that you should just consider. The other item is, if you were to look at the whole harmless agreement, and this is what Mr. Attorney, uh, this is where Attorney Andrews was trying to point out to you as part of the whole harmless agreement. It makes no mention of either the ASBILs or the need for Mr. Draper to come back to submit a modification for the approval that he acquired from this commission. So that's what he's trying to make apparent to you. And you, you'll note that on the bottom of the draft language that he has written, if, if you guys believe the whole harmless agreement is, is satisfactory, then that's all you, you may, you may need. But if, if, if you want to include the fact that the ASBIL shows where the retaining wall is, that, that's, that's part of, I think, what, uh, Attorney Andrews was, was alluding to, just to have, uh, affirmation that, uh, Mr. Sutton, i- i- it agrees to what's being shown. That's really all I have, I'm happy answering all the questions.
Thank you, David. No, no. Mr. Draper? No, because there was a mistruth spoken there. Well, I'm, I'm just getting tired of this, because it's constant, alright? First off, we didn't do any work without a permit. We didn't apply yet. That's the first thing. Okay? I can do anything I want on my property until I apply for a permit to do something there. I can cut trees down, I can move dirt, I can hammer rock. That's exactly what I did. Once we decided what we were doing, then we stopped working, and we applied and went through this commission. That's number one. Number two, there was still forsythia along that whole rock, if you want to call it a rock fence, what somebody called it, because I've never heard such a, a term. But there was forsythia that still protected it. So, to allude that the fence was put there because of the work that we did previous is nonsense. The fence was put there because that's the safest place that the fence would go. Thank you. Uh, you gonna open up to any comments from the public? Anyone here? Not a public hearing, sorry about that. Um, and Mr. Stone's on mute.
You, you muted, you muted yourself.
Top right.
Again, hi, it's Rick Sutton. I mean, I, I can't speak for my brother. I mean, we've been going through this, again, I, I don't, I, I don't know, do you guys want me to get back in the middle again and try to work something else? I'm, I'm not sure what, what I can possibly work out. Or, or what are we looking, what is, what is someone looking for? I, I don't know, I mean, I'm trying to work with Tim and my brother, and I, I know it, it can be very difficult. I'm, I'm willing to do that. Tell me what you guys, what anybody is looking for to get this whole thing straightened out.
That's gonna be productive.
That's, that's productive. I mean, I mean, we've been, I mean, even before November, even before November, I, I talked with Tim.
Great. I, it, let us discuss here with the, with the, amongst the commission here, we'll have comments and questions, and then we can go.
Hi, Michael, I, I have a comment.
Yeah.
Chuck, did you go through the, the agreement that Tim, uh, said that they've signed between Mr. Sutton and himself? You're, you're muted. You're muted. Can't hear you.
I apologize, I've been, I've been losing internet off and on, so I've missed some of this. But, yeah, the, the, the concern, I'm not concerned, the commission hasn't, doesn't be concerned about insurance or what their agreements are. We just need to know if Mr. Sutton consents with the improvements as shown on the ASBIL. And unfortunately, this whole harmless agreement doesn't mention the ASBIL. Maybe that's what it means. That's all. That's why I, I proposed a motion of approval with two conditions. One, that he simply say that, yes, I agree, as shown on the ASBIL, so we, it's clear that, um, you know, he signs off on the ASBIL and says, yeah, I'm fine with those improvements on my property as part of the site plan. And once you get that, it's just saying, a- and then if I ever have to move it, then, um, you know, then Mr. Draper will have to move it if they withdraws the consent, because this is a revocable license. So, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to move this forward as well, I think, because I, I'm, I'm not concerned about all the other thing. I think the safety issues have been addressed, it's just the issue of consent. Did they actually consent to the improvements as shown on the ASBIL? And I just couldn't tell that for sure from this whole harmless agreement. It didn't have the ASBIL attached. A- and so that's why I thought it would be do it, do it. But if that can be clarified, that this actually refers to the improvements as shown on the ASBIL, if that sentence was in there, then I'd say, there's your consent. And then, um, then, then, then you can approve it with the condition that if they ever withdraw the consent, you just gotta move the stuff, which I think is part of this as well.
Understood. Uh, excuse me, Tim Draper again. Okay. Again, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, from David McCollum. If Tim wants to keep the fence at forty-six Nashville Road, he must submit a written agreement that is signed by both parties. Obviously, the town planning zone, uh, department, before November twelfth, got the A two, or the ASBIL. This is January twenty-first.
Is the, is the ASBIL in the works here?
No. The answer is no. But this is what Mr. Sutton wanted. We didn't write, we, we wrote what he wanted. What he told us to write was written, six drafts, ask Rick Sutton, my brother, six drafts. This is what he wanted. He didn't say, I want to know about the A two. He's seen the map, the map's been here, okay? It alludes to the A two map, because the fence is on his property and the wall is on his property, part of it. Okay? So, why Mr. Andrews wants this?
Doesn't understand.
I, I don't get, to me, you're, you're pushing it. It's just, it's just continuing, continuing, continuing. This is, this should have been done administratively, quite frankly. Why we're, we're in this commission is beyond me. Again.
I, I, I'd be happy to address that.
I'm sure you would.
I, I, yes, Mr. Draper. Uh, first, first of all, I, I'm leaving it to the commission. If you want to construe this, there are references in here to a stone wall and also to a retaining wall. So maybe if in fact, this is, can, can be construed as him having looked at this, consenting to those that are shown on there, then that's fine. But, but the, and I understand that the problem is, you're having to go through six drafts and dealing with the neighbor, but obviously, the, the, the issue, the issue is that you built on property you don't even own. That you built on someone else's property after the fact, and we just need their consent to it. That's, that's the whole thing. That's what I suggested to Mr. Marcus yesterday, hey, just get him to sign off on that. And maybe you can infer that that's what he means, and maybe someone can clarify that, in which case, adopt the motion. You don't need that, just have the second condition as the only condition.
One thing, one thing. Why don't you ask Mr. Sutton? He was the go-between, between me and his brother, Robert. That's, that would be the best way. He knows every, he knows more than I know, because I've never talked to his brother since last summer. Mr. Sutton, do you understand the question that is, is being asked here?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I do. I mean, like I said, that I, I've dealt with Tim even before this came up, and I tried to be a, a, what I call a federal mediator. But I, I think I, I mean, I'm, I'm also in a difficult position on this one, too. I thought we had this all put to bed, and now I'm, I'm hearing it's not put to bed.
It, it, we're, we're, we're.
I mean, you know, I, I, I mean, does the town want to talk to him? I'm willing to talk with the town, with my brother, and Mr. Draper, that I get along with very well. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm willing to do, because this thing is going on way too long, and we're trying to do this. Yes.
In, in your letter, uh, between, between your brother and Mr. Draper, there's, you allude to the fence and to a wall.
Yes.
Is it, no, do you, basically, want to know, does your brother know that he saw the A two survey? And he's consenting to that, he saw the A two survey, and that that agreement is written up based off of the A two survey?
Yes.
That's what I thought, yes, that's.
Thank you.
You know.
Yes, Mr. Legner.
Putting the fence where it is right now doesn't change the property lines in any any way, shape, or form.
Yeah.
Well, the line stays where it is. The fence goes on Sutton's property. A a a simple explanation of what happened.
What 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 what?
Mr. Sutton, I I know you want to respond. Just can we just let the commission members talk and then we'll get to it?
Go ahead, sorry.
My, I I I'm I'm in favor of putting this to bed, too, tonight, with everybody happy. The 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 fence is a safe place, it's it's meeting the safety requirements that we were interested in when we approved this thing.
Right. Kenny.
I read the agreement. It's all in Mr. Sutton's favor. I'm happy with it.
Eric. Diane. Jeff.
Have questions.
Go ahead.
Why was the plan not followed? Why did we dig out so much that we made a rock face that needed a fence?
Well, the fence was always part of it.
The fence was always part of the site plan.
We have to apologize, some of us weren't here.
No, no, it's okay. I can explain.
I saw the fence was supposed to be on your property.
So along that property, yeah, so along that property line was a stone wall of rubble about this high. That was it. And a massive amount of persythia. So as you're digging out, stuff was starting to fall in. So most of that rock there, we didn't blast, because you didn't have to. It was very fractured. We kind of call it rotten ledge. So we had to hammer it a little bit. We actually moved more with the excavators than we did hammering. That's unheard of. So what happens is it it kind of peels, keeps peeling, keeps peeling, and it's not going to peel this way. It's going to peel this way. So it did peel this way, which was fine. And we were, and but as you're doing it, the persythia is falling in and whatnot. So when we got down to the bottom, we did have a pretty good face, especially right next to the stairs that somebody alluded to, that they came out very nice.
Yes.
Okay, there's the the biggest part of the wall. All that is aesthetics. That's actually behind that is solid ledge. As soon as you get down to, there's a small portion of, they're kind of like lilacs and saplings. Mr. Sutton wanted to keep those. I was willing to take him down for him and put all persythia in there. He's like, nope, they're I they're, again, he's a difficult man, me and him to talk to. So whatever he wanted for landscaping, we did. Hence, all we did is stone wall, because on the on the original site plan, all it says is modified riprap. Basically grading, what looks better, let's say, for riprap or a wall that's this high that looks good? That's going to have landscaping in front of it that you can't fall off. I I guess, I guess one of the questions I have to go on with Jeff is, wholly understand, your logic makes complete sense. Why, I, I understand that, but why why not just have it two feet over onto your property? Because we agreed, Mr. Me and Mr. Sutton in the field, the one day he was talking to me when he was walking his dog, at the pinnacle, that's the best. We could have came down three feet out of my property, but then somebody could still got to the top of his, and technically, they could fall off of it. It's not a cliff, but it still comes down at a 45. It's a slope, but it's real. Why would you put it at the top? It's the smartest place, the safest place to put it. No, the fence, I'm talking about the retaining wall. Why not just have the retaining wall? That portion of the wall. Because we we did our our ours onto our property and then just continued on there. Aesthetically, it looks great.
That was really aesthetic. Responsible to stay on your own property. If you knew where the line was.
But he agreed to.
Why wouldn't you just move it over to your property?
But he agreed. That's the part, so and so. But now, once you hit the property line, that is his wall now. It's his wall. I don't own that wall. I own to the property line.
But Jeff, that that was still responsible.
I'm responsible for it, but I don't own it.
Quite honestly, it's solely aesthetics. It's the only reason it was done. They didn't, instead of stopping the wall and leaving some rubble on the Sutton property, they continued the wall. It's it was aesthetic. By the way, if it's a problem, it can be ripped out. It's so easy. I mean, we can put the rubble back. I mean, it's easy.
I hope not, because it's a beautiful lawn.
No, that's why we did it.
I just don't like going on to the neighbors' lawn when you know where the line is.
Well, here's the problem. I'm I am in the construction industry. I understand. Usually, if we do go onto another property, I understand you had an agreement. We have an approved site plan. Typically, we do bring in a town official, say, this is what's happening. I just wish that step happened. It didn't. We're here now. I understand. I didn't realize the wall was over that far. Basically, they, if you look in the picture, there's a brand new telephone pole. And abruptly, that was about where the property line was. That's where the iron stake was. So is it my fault? Yeah, to an extent, but we agreed on it. Me and the homeowner agreed on it, that the wall could go in there, okay? That's the point. We agreed on it. It's not like I just willy-nilly did it. We agreed that that's where it would go. We agreed that's where the fence was going to go. We're only here to modify the site plan. That's it, to say that. Because I had to put a fence up. I'd have to put a wall up. I had to put a fence up. You know, and then we're here sitting here saying, we took our fence from what's on the site plan and moved it four feet over or whatever it is. That's it. I agree with the fence location. Safety makes sense. I I guess, Mike, you're building a structure, a wall, whether it's higher than three feet or whatever. I just would, you know, in the future, hopefully, we can have conversations, say, hey, you know, verify it. Like, we always have to verify when you're in construction. I totally understand, and a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. I hope we make our best effort to do that, hopefully.
No, I'm fine.
True. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, I I just, I I think that my brother's big thing was that if someone, and I I've talked with Tim on this, if someone gets hurt on the fence or the wall, that whoever owns the property at 42 Nashville Road, they're responsible for everything.
That is correct.
That's, am I correct with Mrs. with with your returning? That that's my brother's biggest concern.
Okay.
Right?
I have a question. Is there a title issue with this encroachment for maybe a future owner? Wouldn't that be?
No, so, actually, I think we're looking at, we're looking at any owner, because he is 73. And as you do know, I mean, the property will be sold at some time.
There's an encroachment, but those people, it is an encroachment, actually. Why wouldn't it be an encroachment? Why wouldn't it be?
Sutton owns the wall, Sutton owns the fence.
But it also states, I'm sorry, I'm Deborah Sutton, Richard Sutton's wife, also stated that I shall hereby do indemnify and hold harmless any damages incurred as consequence of the rising out of the revocable license of the premises forthin. I hereby release this liability of all of those damages incurred by me, my contractors, and all third parties. It also says that it will cover all of my beneficiaries and any future property owners.
So we we're ensuring against any injury or damage from the wall or the fence that belongs to Mr. Sutton now. And we built it on his property.
But he doesn't, he doesn't, I I think the thing is that he still may, he doesn't want to be the owner of the wall.
But he doesn't have, Rick, that's the license. It it's a one-way revocation. Tim cannot change it. But your brother or any representative of the property in the future can revoke the license. Say, get the wall off of here, get the fence off of here. That's what it says. But while it's there, your brother has no liability. He he perfectly indemnified by this agreement. That's that's what we did.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I think. Agreed. We we got. We understand that. We understand the whole harmless. I think we're all in agreement there. I think Mr. Sutton answered the question I asked him previously. I think that makes sense. What are we, what are we doing here? Make a motion?
There's a draft motion.
Okay, so before I read the draft motion, or can we go get like a consensus here? Are we okay with removing number one? Was what Mr. Sutton answered that question, okay with removing one? Number one, based on Attorney Andrews' note at the bottom, that if we are confident that the whole harmless agreement provided by Attorney Marcus reflects the consent of the owner of 46 Nashville Road to the improvements shown at 46 Nashville Road represent as an eligible, as an ASBIL, it could be deleted. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Kenny? Eric? Diane?
Okay.
Yes.
Bob's okay. Jeff? I'm okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, um, so you have to sit on the table.
Uh, yeah, you're right. Sorry about that. Uh, I'm going to sit Jeff Terosa for Paul Shandling. All right, that was a consensus.
Big job.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the modification of the site plan for 42 Nashville Road. I'll read this into the record. Motion to approve the request to amend the approved site plan for 42 Nashville Road to reflect the conditions presented on the ASBIL survey entitled Zoning Location Survey Map Prepared for Timothy Draper, 42 Nashville Road, Bethel, Connecticut, by New England Land Surveying PC dated October 21, 2024, parentheses, the ASBIL survey, with the following conditions. We're going to strike condition one and condition two. In the event the owner of 46 Nashville Road withdraws his or her consent of the to to the improvements shown on the ASBIL that are located on 46 Nashville Road, the applicant shall seek a modification from the commission of the site plan showing the improvements to be located entirely on the applicant's property, parentheses, ID 42 Nashville Road. Kenny?
Hi.
Oh, second. All right, we'll do a roll call, Kenny?
Yes.
All right, Diane? Jeff?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Kitty, yes.
Spro, yes.
Bob said yes.
Yes.
I said yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Does the commission need me for anything else?
No, thank you, Attorney Andrews.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nope, I'm just grabbing one real quick. He's cracking the chest.
Moving on, we have our new business, 185 Gration Plain, Ladania Seabear. Will you check that for volleyball facility?
185, um, you recently have accrued a building, 15,000 square foot addition. If you go in park park, a couple powers on your side, you could see the building there. And, um, anyways, the use of the building is for recreational purposes, requires a special permit for a volleyball AAU trainer, along with pickleball. Need a public hearing, and staff suggestion would be that it be held on April 8th.
All right.
Is this it?
I think we had a public hearing on April 8th for Ladania Se- Seabear, 185 Gration Plain, new volleyball facility.
What was the question, Mike?
Oh, no, no, I can ask. All favor?
Hi.
You opposed extensions? We send that out, Dan.
And we get, part of the motion is that it's due for 12 years.
All right, moving on to David, Robert, Camer, Ortiz, 117 Chestnut Ridge Road, re-subdivision.
It, there was a re-subdivision that was approved several years ago. The applicant never filed the MYLR in the land records, which is state statute requirement, be done within 270 days with what? Extensions, so therefore, he has to reapply for a re-subdivision again to go through the process, which involves also a public hearing, and the suggestion for that is also April 8th.
All right, I'd love to.
Um. Go right ahead.
Do you have a question?
Does it have to go through wetlands?
Yes, it does. It does.
The the, in the wetlands commission accepted that application, and they are scheduled to continue a site plan review at their next regular meeting on March 24th.
Make a motion to accept, uh, 117 Chestnut Ridge Road re-subdivision for Rob, David, Robert, and tomorrow Ortiz for the April 8th agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
They opposed, the extensions, motion passes.
Are you staying or are you going? I can stay, all right. Okay, um. Yep.
Business meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Our last meeting on the 11th.
Moving to Tuesday, the end is February 11th, 2025.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
They opposed, the extensions, motion passes. Do we have any invoices?
No.
Excellent. Move back to our work session. Do we have any? Nada.
You got a big old planner's report, though.
Any correspondence to go over? All right, uh, planner's report. Beth, you have the floor.
All right. I thought we'd get done a little bit earlier. So I will briefly go through a lot of this. Um, if you want to pass this out to them. First item I want to talk to you about is, uh, Halandia Nursery out on Stony Hill Road. Um, Eugene Reelick has been looking at doing various opportunities in in regards to the property. If you know, for a short time, the property was on the market. It was looked at for residential development. Uh, the family wishes to keep it with the commercial aspects of it. What did I do?
No, he's just excited by what he knew he had.
All right, so I'm going to cut this pitch down real short.
Pitcher or?
Pitch. Okay, anyways, so, uh, in our discussions, he gave you an idea of what he wants to do out there, which is beer garden in conjunction with the running of the nursery. He also wants to, um, do the side of the building, make that the beer garden area, and incorporate picnic tables, um, the portable food, portable beer trucks or whatever. You understand what I'm saying? You all that have gone to beer gardens, you know how they do it. The beer is imbued on the premises, it's brought in, um, outdoor games, which I know.
Is the season always going to do this?
It could be year round. Um, we've been talking about fire pits, things of that nature, too. And there's some long-term plans for it, which I really don't want to get into. I think it's more of his, um, responsibility to get into the feasibility of what can be done in the winter time, incorporating the nursery itself, oh, and so forth. So what I did was I came up with some definitions and some regulations for. Um, first would be you need a definition for a beer garden. We have definitions for microbreweries and things of that nature, but not for a beer garden. The second thing with a beer garden is you have to, um, scope it out as to its relationship with other business uses and other zones. You know, creating buffers, uh, for the residential zone, it can't, it has to be a minimum of a certain amount of acreage. Um, 100-foot setback from any residential zone. Um, events may include preparation of food to drink off-site and and by the use of food trucks. The purpose of this regulation, where I've inserted it, is in the business zone, but only pertaining to the Route 6 area. Route 6 zone, there's no other zone that this would apply to at this point. It has to be in conjunction. Well, you can go through, you can go through this, but I guess what I'm asking all of you is, are you open to the concept?
Is this property in the Route 6 zone?
Yes. It's a property on Route 6, where the commercial aspect is. One on Old Hollywood.
Big Y, and then it ends because of.
One on Route 6.
I live on either.
I I'm sure you would go either place, but, um, the opportunity.
Does this description give him anywhere around the building? I mean, can he?
No.
Next, no?
No. It's it's got a, it, I I know where.
A specific area.
It's a specific, very specific area, and it's along the side that is closest to Big Y.
Right.
And he's got a lot of parking there, but it wouldn't be intruded on the parking area or any other areas. Okay? So is it right if we pursue this?
Yeah, I like to see it.
And once this is done, he'll be coming in with a a plan and a special permit.
What other, what other, not that we're going to have a million beer gardens, but is there any other site on Stony Hill that would fit this description, like this old Heilberg, old?
Dragonfly.
Dragonfly.
That's the only other place. And again, they have an Oktoberfest.
Yeah, so.
Through a special event. Yeah, we do, and and Eugene, you may see the, um, uh, Halandia do a special event for that. Um, he was, he would ask me if he could do a special event along these lines, but, um, of of the car people, you know, that car people is what I call.
Car show?
Thank you, yeah, the car people, the cruise night or something like that.
Oh, oh, I see.
On one night, a week, Thursdays or something, but he's still, he's out of town, but I did want to get this approached. a week, Thursdays or something. But he's still, yeah, he's out of town, but I did want to get this approached to the board so you can, um.
It's a good idea, I think so.
Get this moving, okay? Along the same lines with regulations and Michael, please don't have my head. Um, I, I am leaving. As you know, but I'm here part-time for a while. No, um, uh, garbage. Um, there's some cleaning up that I still want to get done before I leave.
Let us play some time.
Huh?
Let us play some time.
I'm, I'm not giving a date anymore because I'm getting bombarded with phone calls. And people coming into the office.
Like daily?
For the commission.
Just for the commission?
Yes.
But not day-to-day operations?
Only, very minimal.
I didn't ask you.
Don't ask such questions.
Very minimal.
Was there a plan?
What it rains.
Is there a plan for your replacement?
They have put an ad in the paper.
They have?
Finally.
But as of, like today?
Yes.
Still done.
Is that? Okay.
And it hasn't gone into APRC. I, I don't, I haven't gotten the yet, so I haven't put it in. I'm waiting for the ad so I can put it in the American planning.
Okay, when are you going to part-time?
Uh, March first.
Saturday.
Saturday.
So you have five days to fill your? No, I'm sorry, three?
Jeff's gonna, Jeff's apparently has a lot of stuff he wants to bring you away.
No, but I'm, I'm just curious.
I want to know where she lives.
Curious to why. We've known about this day.
It's kind of long.
Just now searching for you.
That's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
That's why I'm putting them on the record.
Okay, let me go back because there are a few things I want to get to. And I, you know, I was expecting to have.
Okay. Sorry.
Keep going. Okay. Uh, so along the same line with regulations, I'm gonna bring up a subject. And I think it's a pet peeve of mine, but it's also a pet peeve. It's become a pet peeve with others on the board. That is the, uh, garbage enclosure. Thing that is constantly come up over the last three, four years, whenever certain people would come in with applications for discussion and approval. All right? Along those lines, the only way to resolve that issue is for the zoning commission to create a regulation. If it's a regulation, then you don't have to listen to it. You don't have to listen to the complaints. You don't have to have the bickering and the arguing back and forth. It falls under your jurisdiction. So what I've done is, um, Mike, you also made some materials available too. I'm gonna just hand you out hard copies, an abbreviated version of what Michael submitted. Um, also, I'm gonna give you something, uh, regards from the state of Connecticut to start with. Uh, what I would like to do is, and I didn't get a chance to develop it now. We just passed this down. Um, you give, let me have the opportunity to put something together in a written format. Okay? With the.
You have four days.
I'm gonna be doing some, you are stumped. I'm gonna punish you, Mike.
I, I, um, what'd you see when I read what I'm gonna be doing? I'll be calling you and you'll be ready for this. Um, anyways, I'm gonna put something together in writing, okay? Um, and I'll leave an opportunity within the regulation. You know, we know what the health department likes. We know what everybody likes. I'm gonna put something together. Say you have a three-family, do you have to do a twelve-by-ten enclosure with a concrete pad? No. You can make it small. But the majority of the thing, items, it's gonna be a ten-by-twelve concrete pad. With the fencing, don't make faces. And we just be done with it.
Okay.
And I'll give that to you guys and you guys amend it, do whatever you want with it. But if you have something in writing, I'll email it to you. So I'll have a copy of it. Either say, go ahead, put it to a public hearing. As far as documentation and why we are doing this, the health department over the last twenty years has given us more written materials regarding rodents and garbage and things of that nature to do any justification for making a standard for our garbage enclosure. And most businesses and most people within the town have got along with it. All right?
Before you move on, I have one comment.
Are you familiar with that? Are, are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just, I have one comment.
Yes.
Uh, the municipal center dumpster is not an enclosure.
Yes, that's correct. Does.
Yeah.
You know, good for they, but not for me.
Well.
So I think if we're gonna require other peoples, we should send them.
Mm-hmm. It'd be nice that the town set an example, but technically I would tell you that municipalities are exempt.
Of course.
From regulations.
But doesn't mean we shouldn't.
If you have an issue with doing that or if you wish to do something like that, my suggestion is to talk to the first election.
Okay.
Because at this point, it's gotten out of control and out of hand.
I agree.
And I am saying that you, you make a very, very good point. But you have to stop this. You have bigger things that you should be dealing with.
We can all agree with that. Yes, I agree with that.
All right, just one, one comment here, Beth. The thirty-first bullet uses the term dumpster. And the way one applicant is proposing an alternate is they're not using dumpsters, they're using individual garbage containers as a replacement.
For pickup.
Right. So now what we have is a potential new development with, uh, polka dots of green and blue or wherever the code for recycling and regular garbage spewed all over the, the main entrance, making it visually, in my opinion, unattractive. So if there's a way of including all uh, refuge, garbage, collection devices to be, and that would give this.
Enclosed, you mean?
No, enclosed.
Oh, enclosed.
It'll be, everything is enclosed unless you all uh, if, say, for example, someone has a ten-unit residential development that they want to do. If, if it's a ten-unit residential development, it goes in enclosure unless you all determine by uh, going through the site plan process, that whatever they're proposing. Oh, okay, they can have the buckets.
Individual.
Individual buckets. But outside, you, you have a standard. Do you understand what I mean?
Right now, there's no standard. You want to establish a standard.
That's right. Through the regulations.
Standard say how many units?
We, no, but I'm.
She's gonna give a shot at that.
I'm gonna give you something and you guys work with it. That's all I'm doing.
Okay.
Okay?
And, um, you know, the formula idea is, is kind of something that doesn't work?
I'm still looking at it.
Okay. Can you?
I hate to be spending, this is like my punishment.
I know. Beth, can you?
For twenty-four years of working.
Right. You wrap it up right at the end.
Can, can you? Um, call the Beth.
Thank you.
Enclosures. Can you put a? A, uh, maybe a proposal together for next meeting?
For what?
For this?
Oh, yeah.
For the.
You're gonna have it next week.
Okay, yeah, perfect. And then, um, we can talk, we can discuss it among us the next meeting.
Correct.
Um, and then if it's something you want to move forward with, we'll, we'll put it to a public hearing and then, uh, make it happen.
Well, what I'd like to do is, is to put two together. So that way, you know, it's cheaper legal notice-wise.
Uh, which one?
Well, I'd advise the beer garden and the garbage.
Oh, yeah.
Recycling, they go together.
Let's, let's look at the beer garden going too.
Yeah, recycling. Um, okay, next, I want to just tell you about a little bit more with eight thirty G. Two things I'm passing out is, and I don't think, and I apologize, I don't think any of you have ever looked at, at senior affordable housing appeals list. That's published by the state of Connecticut yearly. So I'm gonna pass that down to you. The other thing, which um, I'm gonna give you, it's two-sided piece of paper. On the back side, it's called housing unit equivalent points. It gives you a breakdown. The state statute is like ten phases. But on the back of this, it tells you how the points are determined by the state of Connecticut. So you take a little bit of time, take a look at that. Um, you got my memo in regards to eight, uh, our affordable moratorium application. Are we close in points? The answer to the question is yes. You have two, um, eight thirty applications that are coming online, twenty-eight South Street, which is complete. And this one here. When that's resolved. Forty-two Nashville, I think it is, is that the address is forty-two Nashville.
Oh, they don't get counted till they're.
They will, they're not, nothing is counted until they're built and received their COs. That's how it works. The other thing is housing unit points are only based on new construction. So that is what, how you go to get a two percent of your ten percent for it. You'll see, I, I'm gonna think, um, towards the ten percent moratorium, you cap of mortgages count, um, uh, state assistance counts. And those fit, those numbers are drawn from, by the state. They're given by the state to, um, the Department of Housing on a yearly basis. When you look at the number, if you look at the top, it brings you right through. So you'll see deed restricted is what we do. We do deed, go ahead.
If I'm looking at this chart right, how come our, we have five percent?
That's correct.
And everybody else around here has three and two and one.
That's correct.
Brooklyn has eight. Why do we have the higher percentage?
The reason that we have the highest percent is that we have the highest deed restricted. If you look at under deed restricted units.
Yeah.
You'll see that we have eighty-three.
Oh.
Now Brookfield has one hundred and twelve. Those hundred and twelve are all within one development. One big public housing. But anyway, so this gives you an idea. You see who's exempt? Who's exempt? Cities. Who's not exempt? Towns. So therefore, and what happened with this, this was what I just, I just brought this out for not to cry, but to giggle at this point. This is the complete application that was set and ready to go to Hartford. Two volumes of COs and information and things of that nature. I started work here in two thousand. And then two first eight thirty three applications were important. I didn't realize the change in the law that took effect and it doesn't apply because they were prior to the patients.
There's no way to appeal that?
No. Um, over the years, I, I, I've gotten to know many land use attorneys. And I also know the land use, do you know Tim Hollister? Attorney Tim Hollister, um, who wrote the law. And I appealed to him to amend it. This session to include those of nineteen ninety-nine. If there was anything on the books for eight thirty G, and he said there wasn't at this point, no, they wouldn't, he wouldn't be willing to amend it. That's how it works.
We're off by a year.
A couple of years.
A couple of years.
A couple of units.
Maybe. I'll stick around, maybe. But I think we've, we've done everything.
We, we did have the developer from New Jersey who stayed in late one night, right? And he offered to change the units away from Route Six Yep. into, uh, eight thirty Gs. In exchange for us allowing the frontage of the property not to be commercial. And.
I would just, I would, I understand what you're saying. We have, also have to understand is that forty-eight Stony Hill Road building B is almost completely CO. And we have units from that. And building C, so we have afforded, we have thirty-nine units. And that whole development. And that will do it for us.
Okay, so we don't need to.
So we don't need to go shit, horse trade with him. No. Not alone.
I like the thought though.
Well, but what is gonna happen is you'll see continually, you'll have things coming online. Automatically because of your regulations. It's more so because of your regulations than anything else. You know? Because you have, you have regulations now that include affordable housing.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where you're gonna pick up your numbers from. But we had those two. I mean, it was devastating to me. I was.
I could imagine.
Yeah. You're still gonna get the golden dumpster award.
Yeah, we gotta come up with a good name for that.
Okay. All right, so anyways, that's eight thirty G. Um, and lastly, I just want to give you the, um, committee bills. Uh, I know I made the paper a couple of weeks ago about the TOG. They were not happy with me in Hartford. About their TOG. Because my, the gist of my conversation was more so that you know, what you're talking about, we, we have a, a, a form of it. We've had it for five years. I gave them the facts of what we've done, accomplished with it. What goes on with it. And, um, that we shouldn't be mandated. Because we make our own revisions, you know? As you go along, but for the state to mandate us doing it, no. And the state is, you know, and people are very upset and with a phrase with the word TOG. Well, that brings up my last. That is, still two lessons. Uh, first, uh, I'd like us to, as far as the TOG, with all your comments and everything, I'm looking at my calendar. Um, staff is putting together an educational informative presentation for you all. What we'd like to do is hold a special meeting on the eighteenth of March. Wait, let me get the year, month. That's the third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
Okay. Eighteenth of March, do an early meeting, six-thirty. Work sec, work sec. Work session. Strictly to go over presentations by myself, David and Tiana. So we've broken it out based on, um, your comments. To gather a package, I'll send you out your comments. They're all sent out, they'll be sent out anonymously next week. Edit.
Well, I want to answer to everybody.
But, um, but what do you guys think about that?
Can we do it in April?
Why?
It's in April.
Oh, you're not gonna do it?
No, you said March.
No, you meant, you meant April, right?
No, I didn't.
March eighteen.
No, it said March eighteen.
I meant March.
Oh.
Okay, I, you, very selfish comment because I'm gonna be absent during the month of March. But the greater good has to prevail, so if it's in March, it's in March.
What, it was by April fifteenth? Is that bad?
No.
It's taxed.
Okay. Are you an I O S now?
No, I grew up on the CPA as a father, so it's just.
I know.
Squirrel, I appreciate that you'd be out of, out of town, but I think
All right, so.
Pushing it another month is, we've been talking about this since October.
Yeah, no, it's up to you.
I mean, and you're, you're welcome to watch the videos on the.
Do you, if you wanna, you know, I could do the fifteenth. It's up to you guys.
That's actually can do the fifteenth of April.
Can you summarize this bill?
No. Which, which, which bill?
Sixty-eight thirty-one.
So, so that, so that is the live, work, ride bill. That is the bill that Beth had offered some testimony on during the planning and development committee meeting that she was talking to about. Um, we're both sinking our teeth into the language of the bill. There may be amendments that are offered. Uh, there's still a long ways to go this session. Um, but, but the, the gist of the bill is, um, that there was, that there would be, um, incentives or, um, opportunities for towns that, um, uh, are considered to be either trans-oriented development communities or transit-adjacent development communities. The term doesn't really matter. It's, it's, it's just one or the other. A, a, and, and for communities that, uh, uh, that are considered to be such, um, they would, um, have additional opportunities from the state in the form of, uh, funding uh, or, or things of that nature. Um, the, the, the biggest takeaway for you, just off the cuff is, or off the rip, excuse me, is that for, for communities that are not considered that i, i, it's, it's not a penalty for them. Um, some people would, would say that it's, it doesn't really make a difference.
Um, some people would, would say that it's, it doesn't really make a difference. It's still a, a backdoor mandate for, for communities to become. Uh, transit oriented development communities or transit adjacent uh developed communities. Uh, I, 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 I would want to parse the bill a bit further first to, to really see where the, the line gets drawn with that. Um, there are a bunch of other bills that uh may come into play. It's not just this bill that, that's focusing on TOD. Beth and I uh attended a presentation. Uh, CBA, CCA, PA and CASIO today. There's at least thirty five bills that concern planning and development or housing. Or a mix of the two that those three organizations are tracking. A good portion of which have TOD language in them. So. That this bill is, is the most pertinent right now. It, it's, it's the one that got a lot of traction. Uh, discussion wise, uh, it's, it's been a big buzzword for de-cervicata CT. And CT one sixty nine strong, those are the two uh.
The TOD also, I, I, it's, I'll, I'll, I'll close it one. Basically what they're doing is they're going to do another state committee, all different types of departments, members of there, and they're going to give you up the money for anything dealing with grants and funding throughout the state if you have a TOD. Area. The second, the second part of it is that some of the requirements with their TOD is more of as a fright. Than site plan approvals and things of that nature. They don't get into the real zoning aspects of it, except that they're allowing for um. Uh, anything around within a, say for example, uh, ten minute walk with train station, you can put a three family. I run. Things like that. So that's really what it got a lot of people up in arms.
The requirement you're affordable?
Uh, their affordable was very minimal. Uh, density wise, it was ten units per acre. I, 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 I went a lot with the planning and development committee during testimony on it that they. It, it's, it's just, it's very apparent that they throw numbers together. Um, instead of looking at two, most of the few areas of the state which have TOD. We happen to be one of them. Um, and i- it's, you know, same with the other. It's difficult. I don't think, and I still believe, I do not think that any of the bills are going to get passed this year. I'd be very surprised.
But they're not good.
Yeah, the, the.
Long story short, though, the bills are not good for that.
No.
Not.
They're not.
Some of the parts of the bills are already.
You talked about grants and funding. That sounds good, but not.
But, but that's how we get the four point five. You know? That, yeah, but you know, and that it, there. It, it's hard to explain because there are parts of both bills that are already incorporated in our zoning regulation. Right. My attitude with the state of Connecticut has always been let us do our own governing as our zoning is concerned. Because when they start doing these mandates, there's no like, um, like with the eight thirty G. You know, you do the right thing, but you don't get credit for it. That's the problem I've always had. You know, throw us a bone for doing something right. Give us some more points towards our affordable housing. Hey, they did this, they did that. They got all these regulations, these allowances through the regs. In almost every zone in town, there's a form of affordable housing. That's my argument with the judge's staff. We got the regs. You can't build affordable housing in industrial, so you can do some form of it in every other zone in the town of Bethel. Who are regs? We don't need eight thirty G anymore. That's my argument with the state.
We got affordable.
Now we're getting nothing. We're getting absolutely nothing. For being progressive. Okay, I'm off my subject, so sorry.
No, you're right, Beth.
No, it's just, it's very frustrating, you know, and that's why it's time to move on. For me, it's time to retire. Um. All right, but anyways, the TOD and the, we can get into this even a little bit more. We'll do on March eighteenth. The second thing, last thing I just wanted to talk to you about is um maybe a spur of the moment site walk. The weekend before. Meeting that we have on the eleventh for fifty three Taylor Avenue. And if you spur the moment, it probably, you know, we can do it on a Saturday and begin to drop in the sense of the practice or. Grocery shopping or whatever, all of us do on Saturday. That way everybody can go.
You need a motion now?
No, I'm just gonna, just give you permission to do it. Huh?
At nine o'clock second?
Sure.
No, I mean, I just.
I can do it as early as anybody wants. This is Saturday the eighth or something. Yes. Leave it in mind. If you want me to try it a weeknight, I'll do a weeknight. It's up to you. What do you, oh, you, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Monday, Monday afternoon.
No, I see them both laughing there, so they got something going. Uh, no, but I mean, I know everybody has a hit schedule. So um, you know, if you want to, if you want to try a weeknight, we can do that. I'm thinking is. When is the time changing Sunday? Hey, we have, the time is changing this week. The clock is going somewhere, it's backwards or.
On March nine.
Yeah, it's the last time.
March ninth.
It's spreading forward on March ninth.
March night, yeah.
I guess it's not going to help too much.
Yeah. It's up to you guys. What are you going to do? You're, I, I know, you're going to be. Somewhere where I'd rather be, um.
Yeah, we can work, that's fine.
Do the weekend?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm fine.
All right.
Saturday for that?
Nine, nine AM.
No, that day.
Eight.
Eighth.
Mimosas.
Nine AM. Okay. Um, fifty three Taylor, there's a, you can get yourselves in there parking lots. It's a mess in there, but we should all be able to get in there and grab our rounds.
And the other one too.
And then what other ones?
And the second.
Uh, one oh five is, is um. It's pretty straightforward. Um, as far as getting in and looking at the property where it's fifty three, you're going to have to walk. Uh, if you want, we can try to, I can put it on the agenda for the same ti- the same day. And we can shoot over there after this if you want. Okay. All right. Okay, that's all I have, guys. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Smart. What's your comments?
Paul?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, concerning the comments by the town engineer Eric about reducing the TOD to the specified area he recommended. I'd like to make a motion that we consider that, discuss it, possibly vote on it.
Who made this motion?
I did.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Who made the suggestion?
Eric, the town engineer.
Well, we just canceled more.
Public works.
And concerning that, um, I.
I thought he was very compelling.
I um. I would agree with you. I share, share your sentiments. But I don't think that's, uh, we'd have to, we'd have to draw something up and have a public hearing before we can make a motion to just do it. Which is what we're um.
Right, but there's a big difference between nit, nitpicking the TOD and cutting out ninety percent, which is absurd. He recommended a very specific area. He was very accurate with his description. And I think we should seriously consider doing it.
In March eighteen, right? We have, we have, we're getting more information. About all that.
Yes, but you're still going to leave majority of TOD the way it is. This way here, it solves a lot of problems.
Are we doing that on March eighteen? Are we just going to?
Ken, just start. Work session.
Hey, I'm just making a motion. You can not give me a second if you don't like this.
There's a motion on floor. Is there a second? Motion on floor, is there a second? Hearing none. Um. Ken, no, no, I, I want you to know that.
You think he did that on the whim? He did a lot of reporting.
And I, I, I appreciate that and, and I appreciate your sentiment as well. I just, I just don't want you to think I'm ignoring this because I just, I don't want to do this the wrong way.
All I'm talking about is making a discussion. I'm not talking about voting on it tonight or even a month from now.
No, we're, we're, but what we're doing is, is talking about it on March eighteenth. That's, that's part of the things we're bringing up.
All right.
We're going to have. Suggestions from staff of what changes they want to do. Then as a commission, we can decide what we actually want to propose to the town. Have a public hearing. Because we have to have a public hearing.
Right, but until I brought this up, you guys didn't bring it up. No one else brought it up.
That's what we talked about.
It's in, it's in.
Beth's got all of her comments and that's what we're going to.
All right, we'll see.
Are we going to get those comments before that?
Yes.
At the wrong distribution list. It clearly says, I believe the TOD sun zone should be determined based on actual walking distance and not based on a geometric radius. So I agree with what you're saying. That's why I wanted to be on the meeting on the eighteenth. It, it is humanly impossible for me even to reach that meeting electronically. But I agree with what you're proposing. For the record.
As do I.
Me as well.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get to the.
Okay, before you go. There. I thought that, and, and I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair, but the reason that the three of us are working so diligently. Because a lot of you had questions or concerns or making statements that needed to be addressed. By staff, number one. And then number two was, that was a very small. Dose of someone's opinion regarding TOD. And I think you should remain fair and open minded after all, because the town of Bethel has spent. A lot of money, a lot of time and a lot of effort in planning regarding TOD. And number three, wherever I'm at, is when you look at the information and the data. That has been presented to you in regards to TOD, it is not addressing the perception. That has been put out there by some members of the public.
I'm always picking for myself.
Data and perception. Ken, I will agree with you. Ken, you've always been straightforward and I have no issue with that. And I understand what you're, what your personal opinion is. But my, I have to say that the board has to remain open minded. Or if you want to, if you want to eliminate the TOD, the zone totally, go for it. If you don't.
That's not what he said.
That's not what I'm saying.
I know. You're saying to reduce it to the size that Mr. Swenson, Swenson.
Yeah.
Addressed to. I am uncomfortable with that. And if you want to know why I'm uncomfortable, speak to me privately. Well. Because Mr. Swenson is a member of this town. He is a traffic engineer. For the, and he's the director of Public Works. He also is a resident of this town.
I know.
But he only addressed the train.
Right.
The train, he didn't address the bus.
No.
So that needs to be added to the mix.
Is that something that's going to be?
However, taking. A radius and saying, okay, everything in, inside of this is now part of the TOD. Where he was given those, a more accurate methodology.
That's all I'm saying.
And, and I'm endorsing that, my opinion.
And I think what, what the end result of all this is when DP, we have GPZ command. And you ask them those questions. Because they're the, the original designers of TOD. Okay.
We're still gathering, we're still gathering information before we all sit and make any big decisions about revising TOD. I think we're still in that process.
Well, I think you've already decided that you do want to, you, you have cut it down.
What we want to do to it.
Yes, as far as the, the zone itself, you have, you know.
You have, you've already made amendments to the TOD regulations.
But you're also in the works, you have that. Yeah. And the zone, you want to minimize the zone. Not to the extent the discussion will be did what Mr. Swenson said or based on other criteria. That's all I have.
Diane?
Hey, hold on a second.
I'm sorry. I literally couldn't see you back there.
No sweat, I'm here. Um, yeah, real quick, as, as it's your last full-time meeting with us, Beth. Um, just wanted to acknowledge how helpful I think you've been for me, just. Getting my feet underneath me, understanding this process. I second Jeff's sentiments about the uh. Concerns about the timing of hosting the open position. I, I will say, even if that position was posted. Years ago, they still want to find someone with the institutional knowledge to replace you. So. Thank you for everything you've done for me and I think for all of us.
You're here. Thank you, Eric. Thank you. I'm not done yet, though, Eric.
I know, I'm just saying this is the last.
At meetings for what?
No, I, and thank you for being a part of it.
Diane?
I, I, earlier on the beer garden, I had a question about the um. Five acres and, and just having it just on um. Um, six. And my question was, are you sure there's not another, like on fifty eight or anywhere else that, that suddenly that can be?
It could be. Okay, but my, my idea was that it, it was somewhat approached about wanting to do the concept. And I looked at it from the point of view of similar to um neighborhood overlay zone. Also, uh, basically the neighborhood overlay zone be on the state road. You know, I didn't get into the, all the other aspects that some of these other things do, but it has to be on the state road, you know, it's. Things like of that nature. That's why I limited it to Route six. If we, if you adopt something like this and somebody wants to come in and expand it to another area of town, they would have to amend the regulation.
So the way it's written, you say Route six.
Exclusive.
I didn't read it, I didn't see it actually.
It would be exclusive to Route six. This was the draft, this wasn't, you know.
Yeah, when the, when the next, the more final one comes up, we'll still have another crack at it. And it has to look on the period.
I want to put the garbage not together.
Anything else, Dan? The rubbish. Yes, the rubbish. Uh, no comments.
I'm all set.
I'm all set for tonight.
Still, Ignar?
I'm good. Thanks for all your years, Beth.
Thank you for all your years, Bob.
Um. Turn to me, I just would like to say just the, that I am looking forward to the TOD talk on the eighteenth. Um, and hopefully when we leave that meeting, we'll have. An idea as a commission on what we want to present to the town.
Um. I hope so.
And then schedule a public hearing and get the ball rolling on it. So Ken, just to, not ignoring you, just want to make sure it's done the right way.
I get it.
It'll be here the eighteenth.
I know.
Um, all right, public, what? I see there's a ton of people here.
I have no conversation.
No, okay, uh.
BJ.
BJ Liberty. The floor is yours.
Hi, Beth, thanks, thanks very much.
Oh, thank you.
It's been fun. It's the end of an era. Um, I do have two questions, just as a closure status report. What's going on with the VAGI building? And has there been any submission for that um? Development between the cemetery and Dr. Mike's?
South Street. Oh, okay, okay.
Behind, down behind Dr. Mike's.
Um, as far as seventy seven South Street. Uh, until it got really cold, they were putting brick facades on the one side of the building. Um, as far as completion of the building, it's my understanding that we're ninety five percent. Close to having the easement agreement done with the state of Connecticut.
Metro North.
Metro North in order to get that facade. Put in and the windows put in not to have to meet certain aspects of the fire code. So that's the latest update on that. Um, as far as um. Uh, the development across the street from the, from the cemetery, they have not applied for permits, but they do have an approval.
I asked for an extension at one point.
Does that answer your question?
Yep, yep, it does. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. BJ, what's your address? I'll tell you, she lives on that branch.
Uh, eight, eight Grand Street.
Thank you.
All right, any other public input? Excellent.
Okay.
Motion two.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All favor.
Bye.